We're going to go into a work session meeting. This is going to be a work session. We've got four items on the work session. This is mainly for the employees and for the commissioners to be able to talk to the other employees of the county. So anyway, we're going to get started. It's very informal, so we're going to proceed on. Department updates. We're going to go ahead and go into department updates. Where to start? Paula, you want to just give us a quick?
In HR department, we have a, we've got scheduled for October the 10th, a flu clinic here in the admin building. And that's the health department's going to come out and do that. And we've been looking at the health benefits review, which I think is item number three on the agenda. And then open enrollment is tentatively scheduled for the 29th and the 30th of October. And I've been working, you know, I've got to get that out. I've let the insurance agents already know, you know, the 10th of July. And I've got to get it out to all the departments. The employee award for this month will be Steve Root with the fire department. He's got 10 years of service. And Gepfer will be here October the 16th to sign up new hours for the retirement.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Paula? All right. Richard? And by the way, Mr. Osborne sitting back there, he has turned his resignation in. He's going to the city with Daryl. Congratulations on that. And hope, wish you all the best of luck. But anyway, can you give us an update on what your department has left on the, you or Linda, either one, it didn't matter, but since you're here, if you want to do that?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So development continues a steady increase comparing September 2018 to September 2017. The total number of building permits issued through the county, it was a 25% increase. And revenue is up, inspection's up, new home building is up. So subdivisions, homes continue to be built in Bethany, Morings, Hampton Farms, Preserve, Sharp Mountain, Settler's Ridge, and others. Thanks for doing well.
All right. Thank you very much. Where are we at back there? Okay, Mr. Jones, what's happening with the rec center?
All right. So we're continuing with basketball registration. That'll be going on through the first this month, and then we'll start late registration. And hopefully have skills evaluation the 23rd?
22nd.
22nd, 23rd, 25th. After that, we're practicing, and hopefully everything goes good. We'll have our games start in December the 1st. So basketball's going on. One thing that the rec department has been working on, you know, Pepsi made a donation of $5,000 to the recreation department, I think it was a couple of meetings ago. And we've been working on how to best spend that money. At first, we were talking about possibly doing an upgrade in our batting cages, but then we decided to go another route, and we contacted a couple of playground companies. And we decided to go with Southeast Outdoor Solutions, who is Kerry and Michael Poole. And for the money that we got through Coca-Cola or through Pepsi, plus the money we've got through Dave Chevrolet, which equals about $7,000, we're going to put a new piece of playground equipment out there. And Southeast Outdoor Solutions is going to give us, that piece of equipment was around $13,000 for free. So it's a, it's a great thing. It's going to make a great improvement for the playground that hadn't been touched in 15, 20 years. Hopefully have that stuff during the colder months, but be ready to play on by spring baseball of '19. So if anybody wants to see what that's going to look like, let me know. I'll send you the PDF. But it's going to be a great upgrade down at the park.
Okay. Anything going on with the building? Everything looking good there?
Everything's looking good as far as the building goes. So yeah, we're just getting regular basketball season.
How many you think you're going to be?
We typically do around 350 to 400 kids. Just depends. You know, we've got several other, you know, travel organizations that's taking some of the kids away to play travel ball, but we typically with the young, young folks have enough to maintain our own league in-house.
Okay.
So.
Do y'all have enough room? I don't play pickleball, but I understand that's getting real big and real popular.
Pickleball is huge at the rec department. We're probably the only place, probably in this area, that has indoor pickleball courts. What we done several months ago is we're teaming up with another group, and you know, it started off very grassroots. We didn't have much skin in the game, other than a net. And since that time, they provided the county free of charge nets, balls, rackets, anything for anybody to come and play if they want to. I'm sure they would like more access, more courts, but for right now, they seem pretty pleased with being able to play indoor, especially when the colder months or it rains, they can't play their outdoor courts. So they definitely love to come and utilize the recreation department.
And they're mostly using it in when schools and sessions where their kids are not?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's one of our dead periods is early in the morning. They usually come about 10:00 AM. And there's, sometimes there's two different groups. One of the more advanced groups plays, and then they'll have some intermediary beginners play after that. But it's used quite, it's used every day of the week for pickleball. So it's, and typically they have four courts going. So that, so if you ever want to play some pickleball, 10:00 AM to 12, you can come get a game.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry, you got anything? Sloan, Mr. Delrod, you burning the world down? Everything all right?
Station 12 still moving right along. Got the drywall in, they're doing the painting, working on the cabinets. So station 12's moving right along. Standards and training came in, done inspections in all the stations, volunteer pay, checked equipment, training records. Everything went pretty well with that. We're doing a little bit of stuff in some of the volunteer stations, just trying to get them up. The paint stations went really, really well. Had the flu drive last week. Had around, pretty close to 100 came by. Fire trucks are still moving right along, seem to be on schedule. Both the super tankers and the two engines. Mid units, still haven't got any chassis, so we're still...
Was it Dodge or Ford chassis?
Ford.
Chevrolet's not offering any chassis, still not offering any chassis at all?
Not to hold the box, not, not big enough for the boxes that we're remounting. So we're still just waiting on the chassis to come in and...
Who's starting on that? Who was the company that was doing the remounts for us? It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. I'll check a week back later. When was the last time we've been in contact with them?
Talked to them last week. They said they still wasn't yet.
All right.
But it wasn't custom truck body works. And the, I think right now, off the top of my head, what it is, I can get back with y'all.
Okay. That'd be fun. We're not getting anywhere on it. What's the, why are they saying we're having a problem with the cabin chassis? They're just getting that reduction line or?
That's what they're saying. But if you remember, we had a little bit of hiccups with this company before.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Delrod? Philip Dean? Yes, sir. You hiding back there. What you got running?
Uh, not much. We've six meters this month or last month. We've been cleaning up around the shop, getting everything hauled off that we don't use or is scrap. Got it all organized and staged out. We fixed several leaks last month, mainly on the west end of the cabin. Grandview, we're waiting on the core men, or not the core engineers, but the Salvation Army to present the property that we're exchanging through their board. And once that's approved through their board, where we can put the plant and the tank on the same, at the same site, then everything can start moving forward with the intake being put in and the rest of the plant and whatnot.
Right. So that's about it.
Salvation Army is waiting on me to present them with the, with the reverter clause in it. I'm waiting on the survey to pull back.
What's, what's the status on this? Who is doing the survey?
There's...
Lyman Blackshear?
Blackmore.
Blackmore Blackshear?
If you have talked to Chris about something, maybe not talk about it.
Okay. I got Chris Pogge yesterday giving you heads up on it. And I think me and Philip was in the vehicle coming back, we called Chris to see exactly where we, where we stood on that. And he was, he was waiting, something about the property itself had to go back before the board, but the...
That's what the Salvation Army does, but they can't do that until I give them the , like, enter the, until it's...
It's getting surveyed.
Other than that, I mean, it's been quiet. We're looking at, you know, blue. Hopefully in the next month or two, we can get started on it. So when the road department gets ready, they'll take you to come in there.
That's Halloween. Books are making too much noise. All right. Mr. Nicholson?
That was Taylor-Maid, by the way.
About that one?
I knew it was going to be.
Johnny, how you doing back there?
I'm fine. The Fox Long sled, we had a flu drive. We've processed our AMG grant. We're still awaiting money from FEMA. Nothing's developed on that for the last month. We're at their mercy till it comes in. It's been approved. Our hazard mitigation plan was approved, and we've received the hard copies as well as the digital, so that has to be uploaded on the websites. Then, for the road department, Pete Kim's busy paving right now. They're paving Harrington, Pea Ridge, and Part of Fortner for a total of 4.7 miles. Johnson paving is moving back in this morning on Roger Street. They should finish the Nally section either tomorrow or Monday.
Have they already got the majority of that whole area pretty well, as it was being?
They got the Nally section. They don't have the, what you and I would know as wide open, that subdivision?
Uh-huh.
They'll move into that next, and then they'll finish the contract. They should be finished, all that done by the end of the month.
All right.
I have a question, Johnny. I had a call about, there's a couple of trees up Cove Road, and one is like, it's cut back, it's not in the road, but it's right at the road. Are you familiar?
No.
Okay.
Let me know, and then I'll get that to Kim.
I will.
We can check it out. Long, it's, long, it's on county property, on county road. Even though the tree is leaning across a highway, we can't, we can't actually touch it unless it actually falls. I know kind of times, kind of stupid, especially if the stump is on private property. Now, we can...
Right away, is it 20, 20 feet?
What is the right of way on Cove Road? It's anywhere from 100 to 60 feet, doesn't it, Johnny?
Most of Cove Road is 100. That's 50/50. Few places it's 80, and it's a great big field, it just goes way or no. But I'll just, give me that, and I'll go look at it, so I can tell Kim, give them a heads up.
I'll give it to you.
Yeah, we're, Cove's got, of course, that used to be state highway years ago, some parts of there, it's not. And Kim's up there with the crew himself, up there on the, up at Marble Hill, on those three, three roads up there.
All right, let's see here. You think, if you like to ask the, oh, there's Ms. Harvey. So, you want to give us a quick update?
Sure. Things are going fine in that department. I have a copy of the budget calendar. The first page is just the outline of the entire process and, and when it will be submitted, and we'll have the public hearing when it will be approved. The second sheet is the, the schedule of meetings with department heads and elected officials. And that is October 23rd, 24th, and 25th. And the, everyone is aware of their meeting times, so those should go smoothly. The budget is coming together. I'm still lacking a couple of budgets, but we'll, we'll have it put together by the four meetings. That's about it.
Jerry and Becky, y'all see any, any issues with those three timelines on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday on October 23rd, 4th, and 5th, 25th, on the dates and who we're meeting with?
I don't have it in mind.
Yeah, I'm good. I have it on.
That's better than the calendar. Okay. Those are good. Now that brings us down to item number two, the 2018 Tax Digest approval letter. Who has got that? Is that you, Darren?
Yes, me.
What you got there, sir?
Remount went down on the 21st, presented it with our office and Roy's office, and shot through flying cars, no problems. The due date's going to be December 5th. It's going to be, the bill's going to look like it did last year. We've got a lot of, great feedback with the pie chart and the percentages and everything. But a lot of people's been saying, I did a great job on the digest. It wasn't me. It was we, it was the assessor's office, Fay, our office. We've got a great team, probably have close to 100 years of experience behind the counter now, and probably one of the strongest teams we've ever had. But we're excited, and we have more things coming in the near future, too.
The school M and O on the color chart you got on the, on the second page there, any way we can turn that to Kelly green, or does Kelly green, doesn't give you any detail when you start putting black writing on it?
We can pick any color you want. Not this year, it's already in transit, the bill, but in the future, yeah, we can pick any color. Actually, our bill was liked so much by the company that did our bill, the graphics and everything, they're using our bill in the road show as a selling tool.
Right.
They said ours was probably one of the nicest looking bills they've seen, so.
Well, issue we've had over the years, over many years, in fact, people just look at the bottom line, they don't have the bills broke down. And, and transition between county taxes and, and school taxes seem to be aligned as one bottom, bottom figure.
Right.
If we could take and, and take that school M and O and, and put that in Kelly green, because that's the school colors, and that'll make it pop with the fact that everybody knows what their school tax is, what they have to pay there compared to what their county tax is.
Yeah, we can do that. I think they were just trying to coordinate the color, make everything match, but we can do any color that y'all want.
Okay.
Whatever we need to do.
I can, any input from the other two commissioners, I just want to leave, y'all leave it maroon, or would you like to turn it green?
I think for next year, if you can change it, that's a good idea.
We can do that.
I know it stopped a lot of, you know, we did that back when Sharon was in, we did that one year.
One time, yeah.
And it stopped a lot of the phone calls into my office, to the fact that people understood that it was a school tax that was 72, at that time, it was 72% of the whole, total budget.
Yeah. We've gotten all rate feedback with that pie chart, even from the school, everybody. I mean, we haven't gotten one negative word back on it, so.
I'm just trying to make it easier for the county citizens to read.
No, that's, that's what we want, is input and ideas and all, so.
Okay.
Good work, Scotty.
Thank you.
Good job.
It was all of us. We all voted on that, so.
All right. Good job. Thank you. And the approval letter, Darren, has already been, the approval letter has already been signed, sealed, delivered?
Oh, yeah, it's attached.
Okay, hold there.
Yeah, sure is. Yeah, we couldn't leave until we had that, so.
All right. Anything, y'all have anything else on the, on item number two? All right, that brings us down to Pickens County Benefits Review. Paula, what's going on with benefit package?
Well, the county's currently with Blue Cross Blue Shield, and for the renewal next year, Blue Cross Blue Shield has come back with an offer with no increase. Everything will stay the same, the plan is exactly the same. No increase in payment premiums or deductions or anything. Did look at Cigna also, but they come back 6.8% above what we're currently at. And on page seven of the summary is the bottom line of all the benefit numbers.
So you're not seeing any increase for the employees for this year at all, across the board?
No, not if y'all choose to stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Everything will stay exactly the same. The only...
All the coverage and everything, so.
Right. Everything, the only thing they are adding, I guess they're trying to promote the Life Help online, and for 2019, they're going to give 19 visits free for the Life Help online.
All right, I guess that needs to be voted on at our next, at the main, main commissioners' meeting. Lisa, go ahead and get that on the agenda, so that can be voted on. We can't vote on anything in here. All right. Do you have anything else?
I see it.
That brings us down to general discussion. Y'all have anything that you'd like to approach or ask any of the employees here?
Well, I'm glad Mr. Hotliss here. I have a question for him. You know the lady down near the tape gym in the curve, that's that flashing light, saying what the speed is? So I was talking to Jeff about that. Is there any chance we could get one or two of those?
Where's Jeff at? He's hiding behind them.
He's hiding.
Do you have Sheriff's Department have one of those, or?
No, we do not. We don't have anything of that magnitude. And what she's discussing is something that would go on the speed limit side normally, but we don't have anything of that.
She's wanting to, this, this individual's wanting to read her speed coming up the mountain, or going down the mountain?
Probably done ways.
How much, how much is them little rascals? I bet they're pricey.
I don't know. I haven't priced one in many years. They say the prices have went down, so somebody was doing research, I don't know who that was, but I'm going to guess at least around 10 grand. You could probably get them sometimes, I guess, for different models, but I, I couldn't even begin to tell you. I know in the, years ago, they were very pricey. They may have come down. I'm not sure.
Philip did the research here.
I can't remember, I got the price on my desk, but it's around seven grand for two signs.
Seven for two signs?
What would they do?
They, they're solar powered, and it tells the speed.
Or it records the speed.
I don't know. I got the information, and I just got a price. I just got the guy, I can ask, I asked the guy, that was just the one that one person can mount on a stop sign?
Right.
And he said it's, it takes three minutes to mount it. But they did have bigger ones that, you know, require a little bit more.
Now, is it, now let me, let me, normally when I'm going down the respect range, land there, you see these signs, and they, it monitors your speed as you're driving up towards the sign, tells you what you're actually driving, even though you could be in a 25 mile an hour zone. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Not one that just arbitrarily just, that you can just plug in and change the speed limit at random?
This, this tells you what your speed is when you're going.
They, they have several different models. One, I talked to Ms. Becky about, if you were looking at doing something of that, I would look at a model that also records the data. It traps it, because if you just get one that flashes your speed, there's no way to know whether speed is actually an issue on that particular roadway. If you get one that records the data, you can do it on and off. So you can turn it off where it's not flashing, and people are just going to run their normal speed, and it's going to be able to record that data. And then you can turn it on, and then you can see if the sign actually makes a, a contribution for people slowing their speed down, because it's going to record that data. And it'll flash, and the reason I keep going at it, because it'll flash when you're going over the posted speed limit, because you programmed that in. So if you were looking at doing something of that nature, you know, my only suggestion would be, I would find a model that actually records the data. Otherwise, you will never know if you're helping the situation or not, or if there is, is a situation to deal with.
Does it read tag them?
Nah, they have some that do, but they kind of keep, keep going up.
All right, and that'd be, and then also, that's a state highway. I guess that'd have, we'd have to work with the DOT to be sure we can be allowed to put that type of file.
You can put that device up. When I worked for a city, we had a lot of state highways. We could put the device up to record the data. We could even put, in those days, we actually put the rails across the road and had our own tracking for our own cars, just like DOT does. But this is not inhibiting nothing to the roadway. All you're doing is tracking data to better help you understand whether citizens, you know, and their complaints are, are worth looking at. So, because sometimes, you know, people have a couple of speeders in a, in an area that they think that there may be more of a problem than there is, and sometimes there's more of a problem than they know about. So a device like that would help.
I would think it's the big trucks coming around that curve. It's right past the bridge.
Right.
Where the tape gym is. And I would think it's a lot of the big trucks. Just guessing.
How many people have called in on that?
What?
How many people's called in on that?
I don't know.
Well, there's several, I'll give a, Ms. Becky, there has several in that area around the school that have called. We have went out there to try to run speed detection. Again, it's hard to say sometimes whether it's just one or two cars, or there's an inherent speed problem through there. So, you know, sometimes when you put somebody out there, they might not catch anybody. Maybe they see him before, you know, and they're able to slow down. It's really hard to say if there's actually a problem, but, you know, sometimes devices like that help to mitigate that.
I would feel like if, if we're going to have to buy one, or we're looking to buy one for the future, I'd like to have a portable.
They are, they, they, like the one Philip's talking about, they, I don't know...
Unless the school wants to go and have, or should have paid for it, or they have a portable, and we keep there for a few months, then...
Yeah, just move, just go, just attach it to the sign. The good thing about these new technologies and these, all they do is they're just small bikes, and they go attached to a sign, and you move it from place to place. So anytime you give a complaint, you move the sign, and then you, and again, I would recommend you buy something with a data recorder. That way you actually can tell whether, you know, you have issues. If you put it out there at a 45 mile an hour zone, and nobody really relatively speeds in a week, then, you know, maybe it's not as big of an issue as one or two cars.
What is that speed limit at Tate?
35.
35 at Tate Grammar School?
Right there from the depot, all the way past the school, I think it's 35.
But what, what she's concerned about is right there at the bridge itself?
No, it's right there cleaning.
That is the bridge on the right, those houses, well, she's in the one that sits down low.
Oh, on lower level? Ah, okay, okay.
And she did write a letter to the editor. I don't know if Dan remembers that, but it's been about...
Dan don't read them. The...
She did, she did write a letter to the editor.
Out there on the right, going back towards Tate from the coming out of the school.
It's right there at Teo, Teo Carroll.
Teo, okay, yeah, toward Teo, that's at Teo Methodist Parsonage, that way.
Yes, yes.
I don't know where you at now.
Down, down low.
Yeah, but they're looking at, putting it, like going back towards Tate, instead of coming back towards the grammar school.
Correct.
Okay. Philip, see what a portable one of those units costs? We just, say we can't take it out of the school budget?
Ron, if these, I have a question for Jaffe and y'all. If these signs are portable, and you're hooking them to a sign, what's the chance these signs are going to be stolen? I mean...
Well, they're, they're locked. They've got a locking system on it.
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah, they're, they're, they'll actually be locked.
Not that I would ever steal anything, but yeah.
Right. Yeah, well, I mean, things will happen from time to time, but, you know, a lot of agencies, a lot of law enforcement agencies, and county governments, and city governments use these signs, just like you're talking about. And they're a great tool for you to, you know, to confirm an allegation or defend yourselves in saying, you know, law enforcement used to go look, we, we put our signs out, put our law enforcement, there's not that big of a problem on that particular road. We're not saying that's not a problem there, we're just saying that that's how they, they justify, you know...
If we see, and you'll be with Sheriff's Department, if we see, we set this thing up, whether it's there or in another location, we see we have a speeding problem there, does it give any credence to the fact that we could get a deputy out there to start does it give any credence to the fact that we could get a deputy out there to start writing tickets or what, what do we do with that?
We do that anyways, but it's always manpower allegation. So, when we're alleging manpower, um, we can only be at places in between calls of service, calls for service are up right now, so we only average because of short manpower. We're down 13 employees, been down 12 to 15 the entire year. So, when you only got four in the entire county, sometimes it's not.
I understand, but if this has got, if this has got a device and that's going to go in this time, the driver coming through there speeding at whatever, at least we'd have, at least we'd have a tendency to know when to put somebody there.
Yes, if they're, if, if we have people available, we do that now, we put them in areas that we get complaints on. So, if we, if they're not answering a call or not having to deal with some other situation, then they will be, they can go to these areas, that's what we do now. We get the same type of complaints, we get the same type of calls, so we, we make sure our uniformed patrol division knows to go to these certain areas when they're not, you know, but it's a big county, believe it or not, we get a lot of complaints, so it's hard to be everywhere.
Yeah. Right, thank you, yep. Anybody, any further questions for this group?
Not for this group. I got a call from Ms. Long about her plane, she has a plane at the airport and she was having trouble, evidently you have to push them up to the gas tank, somehow you have to push them to be filled up. And, and I think there's just one golf cart down there that you can hook and pull the plane up, but I talked to Randy and he, he sounded agreeable to buying another.
Does she want to buy one for us and donate it to the airport?
No, she wants, she wants her plane pulled up.
I bet she does. I hate that she owns a plane, but she can't afford to pull it up.
But I think we have to do that.
I bought MG5, I sure want somebody to pull it up. I mean, my God, anyway, life will go on. All right, any further questions? Come on, where, you want to do that, or do we? Okay, I'll turn it over to Ms. Lang right now, then.
Lisa, Lisa printed off something out for y'all, or for her, regarding a section of road up there on Cove Road. There's been a conflict between two families up there with regards to the use of the road and we tried to stay out of that conflict. They've approached us about going through the process of abandoning the road and again, I, I don't think this puts us in the middle of their conflict because they've, they've gone to mediation and, and they've settled their claims pending our abandonment of that road. It appears from the survey that these two families are the contiguous landowners and so we could go through our process and then depending on what your findings were after that hearing, if you found that the county's wanted to abandon it, then we would issue quick funding to the two of them, pursue it with their self-defense.
How could we, correct me if I'm wrong, but how can we abandon, this goes all the way back to the late 60s.
And I'm not sure, I'm not, I think where you're going with that is I'm not sure that this section of the road is on our maintenance plan.
Right.
And so, the, the hearing would not confirm that it was on our maintenance plan, but, but if there was an argument that it was county maintained, we're going to abandon.
DOT, DOT back in the late 60s, early 70s, what records we can find at the courthouse? They used to be a state highway. Some areas of that Cove Road up through there was, was 100 foot roadway. Henceforth, they, they, when the state commission realigned it along with the county at that time, uh, they paved the road and of course moved it to clean it up a little bit. And some of these properties have got, uh, some of these parcels, I guess, tagged off for whatever reason, maybe it was a driveway years ago, I, I don't know, but I think that's where you're going, this is what they're, they're.
But both, I think in the past, we've been concerned of one side of the conflict requesting it, um, without the consent of the other, and we didn't want to be in the middle of it. In this situation, it appears the both parties have agreed to approach the county to abandon and then we would issue, if, if y'all did agree to abandon, then we would issue quick funding to the two of them.
So, this is not the road, I was thinking of the one, Mr. Perry, Ron.
The one, no, no, this is not, no, this is not, this is not Harley Trail. Harley up there, this, this is Cove Road out there where Patsy Daniels and Bill Cate and all of them live.
Oh, got you, okay.
That's the one I, that's the one I think of.
They've had a lot of stuff going on with it and.
Yeah.
And y'all have given direction not to get in the middle of it and I don't think this, this is basically helps the law with putting the roads to be abandoned.
When do we, you want to, do we need to get this on the agenda for the next county meeting?
Well, Lisa and I could work out a day for, for when y'all, y'all have, y'all, you'll have, like we've done before, you'll have to actually have a, a call meeting and it has to be posted and that sort of thing. I don't, I don't know that we've got the time there for your, for your regular meeting, maybe the meeting, you just do it immediately before, immediately after the November meeting.
Becky brought up a good point on, on Harley Trail, what's the, what's the status of that?
We have to have a survey of what's to be abandoned before we can go through that process.
Okay. So, whether, so whether we, whether it's entitled to be abandoned, but we're waiting on the survey to get that done.
And then we'll post it, we'll run our legal lineup and then.
They'll have an open meeting in regard to that.
They'll make it determined. Then maybe if we do, we'll talk with somebody or something.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments?